Good evening. Call this meeting to order. City of Palm Coast, City Council Business Meeting. It is Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019. It is 6:00 PM. Please join me in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Holland.
Here.
Vice Mayor Clufis.
Present.
Councilmember Branquino.
Here.
Councilmember Cuff.
Present.
Councilmember Howell.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you. We'll now open up to public participation. These are, um, this is a time for our public to discuss items not on the agenda. So if anyone's here tonight to talk about pickleball, uh, which I know there's a large group, um, we will actually be talking about that on Agenda Item Number H8. Um, so I would, um, ask that you reserve your comments to that point because that's an agendated item. But for right now, uh, we'll open up to the public on items not on the agenda.
Council.
Yes, uh, we want to know, um, I've been noticing a lot of tents popping up everywhere, and I'm assuming they're the homeless people. Um, I believe that, um, a lot of, uh, we're, uh, it's by the library mostly, behind the library. And we just want to know what's going to be done about it.
Um, I'll, I'll answer your, um, question after public comment is over. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker.
Dennis McDonald. Could I ask you to poll 10, 11, and 12?
Um.
On the consent?
You, you can speak to those items when they go. We don't poll the items. You can speak at public comment during that time period.
I just want to make sure it wasn't through consent.
Yeah. No?
Okay. Um, one other thing I wanted to ask if you could, Mayor. Could you give me an answer, um, on a question that I've had for a while now, for a number of months? Back in early December, I went to a neighborhood meeting that was held by the Planning Department, and there were a couple facts that kind of bumped into a kind of a, how can I say? They had a collision at this, uh, meeting. And I discovered that what goes on in Palm Coast is they have essentially two different definitions of how they treat the word impervious, okay? Impervious to Ray Tyner means, um, he treats water, okay, a body of water, okay, as impervious material, okay? Interestingly enough, I know for a fact, having dealt with John Moden for a number of years, okay, that the Stormwater Department considers it just the opposite. So consequently, when developers want to develop, there, it's considered pervious material. But you and I, when we have a pond on our property, it's considered the opposite, and we must pay. So you can see obviously that there's a, um, there's a little conflict there. So if you could get an, get me an answer as to why Palm Coast has a, um, how can I say? Two definitions of the same word? I'd appreciate it very much.
Absolutely. Thank you. Next speaker.
Very nice to meet you. Thank you for letting me speak today. Uh, I also live in the B section. I purchased my first home there a few years ago. And, um, I've grown up in Palm Coast my entire life. I've been here for 25 years. And I was always very safe, felt very safe. I rode my bike by myself when I was a child, and I used to walk to the grocery store, and, um, I just don't feel safe anymore. I don't go outside my home at night. Um, I make sure all my doors are locked, which I should anyways, but I just don't feel safe. And for years, it wasn't a problem with the home deprived, I guess you could call them. But I feel like there's been a few bad apples that have got mixed in with the group, and there's been thefts and robberies. Some of them are inconclusive, uh, inconclusive as to who, you know, is to fault for that, but we all have a, you know, a little inkling of what it is. Um, I just wanted to put in my two cents that I just don't feel safe in my home anymore, and it's my first home, and I just, I want to stay in Palm Coast for the rest of my life. I love this city. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Hi, my name's Catherine Wozanski. Um, to begin, I would like to note that I have no response from the mayor, um, to an email that was sent to her on March 9th. I'd like to publicly thank Sheriff Staley and Joe Mullins, who have been very vocal and visible on the homeless epidemic, which is much appreciated. It's nice to see that Volusia County is addressing their issues with the new bridge building. Joe Mullins shares with me that the city is partnering with the county. You appointed a liaison at the last meeting that I attended. I believe it was Mr. Howell. Am I correct? Okay. I was shocked when reviewing the last city council meeting, Agenda Minutes, where the homeless epidemic was not even mentioned. Are we ignoring this? Are we still going to put up sculptures and new housing developments? Videos and articles from the residents of the homeless area informed us that they get almost $80 a day from paying. They are smoking, drinking, doing drugs, stealing, threatening people, defecating on our city, urinating in the library, the list goes on. Most recently, the gas store robbery and the drug raid, where the criminals were known to reside behind the library. We also have an issue with code enforcement and the homeless. Our city is allowing our land to be ruined, but yet code enforcement won't issue violations for the wrong house paint or parking in a swell when they have a dumpster on their driveway. Tonight, I ask you the questions again. Do you think this is a problem or an epidemic? Are you concerned about the safety of the residents of Palm Coast? Do you think it's impacting our property values? What is going to be, what is going to be done to preserve what thousands of taxpayers, taxpayers love and call home? What is your timeline to end this? The 30 days given at the public safety meeting are approaching. And lastly, what do the residents, the ones who put their thoughts on social media, and they are talking, what do they need to do to get this addressed immediately?
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. The World Health Organization and EPA and CDC, numerous universities around the world have, uh, studied, uh, health according to traffic and how traffic congestion is affecting health in, uh, neighborhoods and everything. And I want to talk about that on Florida Park Drive. Uh, we've, since I've been there, I've noticed that there's been around 16 elderly people that have died. And within the last nine months, there's been rested at 133, had a pacemaker put in, rested at 131, had a stroke, rested at 127, died, rested at 122, had a pacemaker put in, and rested at 135, had a stroke. Now, these are just people just directly around me that I'm seeing this happen to. These are people I know. These are people I care about. And I know that, uh, the city has planned for a traffic study and an air quality study. But as far as what I have read from the World Health Organization is, most of the time, the roads meet what they call level of service. In other words, the road can handle the traffic. There's not a problem with that. And most of the time is the air quality is met by what they call an air quality standard. But yet, uh, the problem is close proximity to home. How close is all this traffic fumes, traffic dust, traffic noise to the residents? Now, they came out with a study and then said that traffic noise could cause strokes or heart attacks to the elderly. So, and I can tell you, we're exposed to traffic noise all day long. And I can tell you, it affects your hearing. It really does. You can go in your house, and you might think you can listen to your TV, but you're going to end up turning the volume up to drown out the traffic noise. So that's part of health, too. My hearing is part of my health. So I'm very concerned about that. Now, not only that, we also have commercial trucks that came, are, have been coming through Florida Park Drive. The vibrations from these trucks have caused damage to homes. Well, who ends up paying that bill? The homeowner. So I reckon I want to ask, when the city does the studies, will they consider doing a study on investigating the residents' health? Find out what their health is like living on Florida Park Drive? Thank you.
Your comments. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor. I wasn't going to speak, but based on the comments of the young lady that preceded, I have to speak. The homeless are not an epidemic. They are people. They have rights. They have needs. Yes, there are issues, there are problems, but the rest of us have issues and problems, too. The homeless need help. They're not all criminals. They don't all make a mess. They are human beings. Some are better people or better citizens than others, but they are citizens nonetheless. They need our help. We have to do what we can, just as we would do for any other citizen of this town, of this county, of Florida, and of this nation. They have the exact civil rights that you have. They have the right to feed themselves, they have the right to shelter, they have rights. And we need to, as a community, deal with that. And we need to deal with it as humanely as we can without, without demonizing, uh, people who are far less fortunate than we are here in this room. Thank you.
Your comments. Next speaker.
My name is Celia Buglisi. I live in Palm Coast since 1991. I am echoing Mr. Stephen Carr, uh, issues with Florida Park Drive, like I, like I have mentioned many times. I, Florida, I called, um, FDOT, and they told me that in our lanes and drives, the authority lays, in, lays into our council and mayor when it comes about speed limits and any, any other rules. I have followed tracks on Florida Park Drive because I had to go through there, and they go on a 30 mile per hour, 45 miles per hour. I saw a debris truck today on Clubhouse Drive at 52 miles an hour when the limit is 40. The city has raised with the last administration the speed limit in those lanes and drives. Folks, they are lanes and drives. They are not throughways, they are not freeways. We have children. I do not drive on 30, on Cooper Lane at 30 miles per hour because there are children on bicycles. I have some friends that move away from the lane to the court to be able to have their little child safe. This is incorrect that people drive at 30 miles an hour on a lane. These lanes were not created by ITT to be, uh, throughways or driveways. One other thing, please, lower the speed limit. Please, put in Florida Park Drive, no true track lane, no true tracks, please. It's very important for the healthy of our neighbors. No, oh, we can move like I moved away from Florida Park Drive 15 years ago. One other thing, I will appreciate if the city will protect our many cyclists, children, competitors with issues and with the, um, association of our, uh, sheriff, uh, to have drivers respect our cyclists. They are tourists, too. They come here for competitions. We need to respect them. They don't. They kill them here in the city and all over Florida. And finally, I would like to congratulate our excellent, um, councilman for the people, Mr. Jack Howell, because he was calling, invited by prestigious Harvard University from Cambridge, Massachusetts, to join and be part of their leadership course. Congratulations, Mr. Jack Howell. I hope you stay with, with us for a long time. This is, uh, everything, please, is very important for us. Safety, safety. I, I follow these trucks, okay, at a distance, and they were smoking, the noise, the vibration. Mr. Stephen, Stephen Carr is right. I'm a witness what these people suffer. I still have friends off of Florida Park Drive. And I don't, I don't live there. I live on a better location. I really, I really care for all those children, those elderly people that cannot afford to move. So please hear us. I've been here many times.
Your comments.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. John Brady, Palm Coast. I'm going to throw you a couple of softballs. Uh, in addition to everything else, April is Na- National Child Abuse Prevention Month, so I didn't see that on the agenda. I guess nobody told you that, but it is. White View, what is going on with White View? When that first came up, it was going to be in the neighborhood of a million dollars. The last estimate, I think, was 1.8 million dollars. That money could be used to put showers, bathroom, changing facilities at the utility, uh, area because it's badly needed. It's about time that this council starts looking at things and takes a more economic view of things. Taking a two-lane road and making it one lane is absurd. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
If it's not on the agenda, Jules, you can speak now.
My name is Jules Kwiatkowski. I'm the Commissioner for the East Flagler County Mosquito Control. I'd just like to read you something that Flagler Live put out. "The Florida Department of Health in Flagler County encourages all residents and visitors to take precautions against mosquito-borne illnesses to prevent mosquito bites. Last week, an EMEU kept as a patent Flagler County tested positive for Eastern Equine Encephalitis." That's what we call, uh, Westland Nylavirus. This virus is a mosquito-borne afovirus. First recognized in humans in 1938, this virus cycles between mosquitoes and birds in freshwater swamps. Given that there are no human vaccines or preventive drugs for E and E, the best protection is to avoid getting bit by a mosquito. Department of Health of Flagler will continue surveillance, including testing humans who have been in contact with the EMEU as well as other animals. As a precaution, people who own livestock in Flagler County, particularly those with horses, emus, ostriches, llamas, and alphas, should speak with a veterinarian about EEE vaccination. To protect against mosquito bites is important to read these basics: drain and cover. I'd like to read you a couple items here. Drain the water from the garbage cans, house gutters, buckets, pool covers, coolers, toys, flower pots, or any other containers where sprinklers or rain has collected. Discard old tires, drums, bottles, cans, pans, broken appliances, and other items that are being used. Empty clean bird baits and, and pet water bowls at least once a week. Protect boats and vehicles from rain with tarps and don't accumulate water. Maintain swimming pools in good conditions and appropriately empty plastic swimming pools when not in use. For your skin, cover your, cover your clothing with repellent. Wear shoes, socks, long pants, and long sleeves. This protection may be necessary for people who must work in areas where mosquitoes are present. Repellent. Apply mosquito repellent to bare skin and clothing. Always use repellents according to the labels. Repellents with DEET, Picardan Oil Lemon, Ecliptus, or Menthol Idol are effective. Use mosquito netting to protect childrens under two years old. Permitting exercise can be applied to clothing and gear, but not the skin. For more information, you can, you can contact us at the East Flagler County Mosquito Control District.
All right, Jules, thank you. Thank you.
I want to tell you that.
Thank you for your comments, Jules. Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Jules. Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker. Okay, scene, now we'll close public comment. Um, I'm going to first address the commenters about the homeless issue and the topic of homelessness in our community. I am going to request that Councilmember Howell, our representative, follow my comments on this particular issue. Uh, we're not going to have a conversation back and forth. This is for information that we're providing as an update. Um, you know, the, the city of Palm Coast is a part of this discussion. We are part of this discussion, but we are not the landowner in this discussion. The county owns the property. That is why we actually can't go in and remedy the situation on an immediate capacity because we do not own the property. Um, one of the reasons I suggested a comprehensive approach, um, that does need to be compassionate, frankly, uh, is one, where it makes sense for us to address this issue on a countywide level. The fact of the matter is, when we were, you know, dealing with adult entertainment in this community, uh, you can't take one issue and move it to another part of the county and think that's acceptable. This needs to be addressed on a countywide level where there isn't jurisdictional boundaries that are actually associated with it, but actually finding solutions that would make sense to address the issue comprehensively. Uh, and that's what we're doing. Uh, the, the vehicle that we're doing that within is called the Public Safety Coordinating Council. It is a council that was set up by the County Commission. Actually, when I was on the commission, I suggested setting up that exact council where you have stakeholders in the community, um, that are engaged and involved in this process, this discussion, and this issue, that actually can move this discussion forward and come to a conclusion on how we address this issue community-wide. That is where we are at in the process. Um, we are taking it very seriously. We are, we are not, um, diminishing the fact, uh, that they are, you know, human beings in our community, but we also want to address the fact that these are public safety issues. This abuts against residential neighborhoods in, in our city that we need to be mindful of, and we need to ensure that, um, our, our neighbors in those sections are also kept safe. Um, so we're not overlooking any of that. It is why we actually suggested appointing someone from our council that could advance this discussion from our perspective, um, and thus with Councilmember Howell's background. Um, we felt it was a suitable, um, actually representative that could partner not only with the county, but the, the, um, public safety entities in our county that will resolve this issue. So I will turn it over to you as an update.
Thank you. And certainly, I, I do appreciate, uh, your insight and putting me on the Public Safety Coordinating, uh, group, but more importantly, today I attended the very first meeting of a, uh, Flagler-Volusia County, uh, Homeless Coalition. Now, some of you probably read an article that was printed both on Flagler Live and in the, uh, Palm Coast Observer on my position with regards to homeless. Uh, this is not a snap-your-finger, they're-all-gone scenario. However, I had asked today that, uh, the media provide information and help educate the citizens on what we have here. Uh, for example, I know that two residents that were out there by the, um, library is homeless, they both suffer from dementia. They're both on Social Security. However, the funds that they have through Social Security will not get them into, uh, a treatment facility. And that's why they're where they are. Um, I indicated to everybody that, you know, we've got laws that, under the Constitution of the United States. Now, on the other side here, today we were briefed that the library, the second half, is going to be claimed, they're going to move some of them back over to the eastern side, but, uh, you know, they picked up a lot of trash and a lot of human waste, et cetera. Uh, Heidi Petito is responsible for that action on the county level. Uh, I was not overly impressed with what I saw today at this meeting, and I'm going to take charge. And, uh, it needs to be done my way because they're spinning around and they're not doing what has to be done. Uh, talk is great, but the action is not being there. Now, keep in mind, though, I just can't grab people and say, hey, we're going to put you in a facility. Don't work that way. And so there is a lengthy process, but we are working on it. We're on top of it. You have my word that things are going to take place that will make it safer. I'm also zeroing in. Now, everybody's focused on the library, but we have other homeless encampments, which I've flown over. And I've seen where they are, and I- I've flown over, and I've seen where they are, and I know in one particular case, because Deputy Williams and I were talking about that today, they're on private property. And what we have to do is, and this is a frustration to them, we have to get a hold of the property owner, and we have to see if they will put a "No Trespass" sign on their property, which the Sheriff's Department has had trouble trying to get the enactment from the owner. I have ways. We're going to get that done. But I want to make sure that the, you know, that everybody understands the gravity. Now, there was some issue about the churches and being enabling to some of these people. Excuse me. But from the man that sits in the place called the Vatican, to the Inmans, to the rabbis, to the, name the religious sect, that's their business to take care of the poor and the helpless. Now, that's not to enable them, and these ministers that have been dealing with them know who's the con artist and who isn't. So we're trying to work together as a coalition and have them involved here. I've established that I want this coalition, this task force coalition, to come up with, and I'll probably be writing most of them, the goals. Got to have goals. And then I'm going to assign tasks. I already assigned myself to helping write grants. I used to review grants for the Department of Justice. And our grant is coming up, there's another one, and I want to make sure that it is written and to the point where the Flagler County citizens are adequately represented with the funding that is going to be received. That was one of Joe's concerns, that Volusia was getting more funding than we and not necessarily based on a fair split. So those are the things that are going to happen. You've just got to bear with me. I lit the fire, and I'm going to keep that fire going until we resolve the issue. It's not going to fade out, and it's going to be an, oh, well, you know, once again, government didn't do anything. You have my word. I'm going to do everything that I physically can to resolve this issue, but it will not happen overnight, and you've got to give me the time. And I will keep you posted. I will put input into our Facebook page. I will put input to the media representatives here, so you'll see what's going on. You'll be able to see the progress, okay? That's all I can ask.
Thank you for the update. Okay. And as far as the Mr. McDonald's comments on impervious to pervious, Bo, I would ask that our department head come up and speak to that issue about the different definition and how it's viewed.
Sure. Steve or Carl could possibly come. My guess is that we're talking land development code, but probably has a definition of impervious and the stormwater ordinance. So we can get both those definitions to Mr. McDonald through email. Guys, do you have anything else to add to that? That's my guess, though.
I'm not certain how planning refers to that definition specifically. We can look into it, but I know in regards to stormwater, it really deals with your drainage permit, water management district, and those sorts of rules and calculations for stormwater drainage. That's how the engineering department views it.
Yeah, the only impervious that I ever deal with is roadways, concrete, structures, things that water will not travel through. I'm not sure what the reference is to the other impervious that's being spoken to, but we can look into it.
Let's look into that, and if Mr. McDonald has any specific points, I would ask that you communicate that directly to them and then get a response.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
And as far as Florida Park Drive, we are obviously going through an action item. We appreciate the commenters that have spoken about that issue, and you'll be hearing about some upcoming discussions about that at future meetings. Agenda item number E are the approval of the minutes of the City Council for March 19, 2019 Business Meeting, March 26, 2019 Workshop. Do I have an entertain-
I'll make it.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made. Second it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that passes unanimously. We will now present the proclamation. Agenda item number F2 is a proclamation on Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Vice Mayor Clufus will be presenting. We'd ask those receiving this agenda, this proclamation, to please come up to the podium, please.
How are you?
I'll, how are you? Just a seat.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual assault violence is widespread and impacts every person in this community, and whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our community, and statistics show that one in five women and one in 71 men will be raped at some point in their lives, that's one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before age 18. Youth ages 12 to 17 are 2.5 times as likely to be victims of rape or sexual assault, and on campus, one in five women and one in 16 men are sexually assaulted. And whereas during 2018, Family Life Center, as a certified rape crisis center in Flagler County, provided 209 sexual assault-related community education events, 1,593 supportive services, and answered 54 sexual assault crisis hotline calls for survivors of sexual assault and their families living in Flagler County. Whereas the Start By Believing Public Awareness Campaign, a program of End Violence Against Women International, is designed to improve the responses of friends, family members, and community professionals so they can help sexual assault victims access supportive resources and engage the criminal justice system. And whereas the city of Palm Coast joins advocates and communities across the country because we are strongest when we raise our voices together to change the culture to prevent sexual violence. Prevention requires addressing the root causes and social norms that allow sexual violence to exist. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and each day of the year is an opportunity to create change for the future. Now therefore, be proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, April 2019 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Palm Coast, and I do hereby encourage all citizens to support the Start By Believing Public Awareness Campaign. Signed this second day of April 2019, City of Palm Coast, Florida, Mayor Melissa Holland.
Want to say some words?
I'm the Economic Justice Advocate, Jennifer Caldwell.
I'm Domestic Violence Advocate, Heather Tolman.
Good evening. I'm Candace Wilkie, the Sexual Assault Services Coordinator.
And my name is Julie Carroll. I'm a sexual assault advocate. We just want to say thank you so much for your continued support of the Family Life Center and the survivors of sexual assault. We could not do the work that we do without you guys. I'm going to tell you guys of a couple events we have going on this month. The first one is a Walk Among Her Shoes. That is Saturday, April 13, in Veterans Park in Flagler Beach. We really truly hope to see some faces there. Awesome. And then we also have the Paint the Town Teal Contest. This is our third year now. We are asking businesses to paint their windows or their storefronts teal in support of Sexual Assault Awareness Month. So hopefully you'll see some teal windows around. And then we also have Denim Day, April 24. It's the 20th Annual Denim Day where we ask businesses to wear jeans, that your workers wear blue jeans to, it is to prevent victim blaming. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Agenda item number F3 is a proclamation on Crime Victims' Rights Week. Councilmember Cuff will be presenting the proclamation. I would ask those that are receiving it to please come up to the podium.
Whereas in 1982, the President's Task Force on Victims of Crime envisioned a national commitment to a more equitable and supportive response to victims. And whereas this commemorative week celebrates the energy, perseverance, and commitment that launched the Victims' Rights Movement, inspired its progress, and continues to advance the cause of justice for crime victims. And whereas crime can leave a lasting impact on any person regardless of age, national origin, race, creed, religion, gender, sexual orientation, immigration, or economic status. And whereas incorporating communities, existing experts, and trusted sources of support into efforts to fully serve survivors will develop a criminal justice system response that is truly accessible and appropriate for all victims of crime. And whereas with the unwavering support of our communities and victim service providers behind them, survivors will be empowered to face their grief, loss, fear, anger, and hope without fear of judgment, and will feel understood, heard, and respected. And whereas serving victims and rebuilding their trust restores hope to victims and survivors as well as supports thriving communities. And whereas engaging a broader array of health care providers, community leaders, faith organizations, educators, and businesses can provide new links between victims and services that improve their safety, healing, and access to justice. And whereas honoring the rights of victims, including the rights to be heard and to be treated with fairness, dignity, and respect, and working to meet their needs, rebuilds their trust in the criminal justice and social service systems. And whereas National Crime Victims' Rights Week provides an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that all victims of crime, especially those who are challenging to reach and/or serve, are offered culturally and linguistically accessible and appropriate services in the aftermath of crime. And whereas the Flagler County Advocate Alliance comprised of crime victim advocates from Bonnell Police Department, Family Life Center, Flagler Beach Police Department, Flagler County Sheriff's Office, and the Office of the State Attorney, Seventh Judicial Circuit for Flagler, is hereby dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our communities and our members, responders, and working for a better future for all victims and survivors. Now therefore, April 7 through 13, is hereby proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, as Crime Victims' Rights Week, and reaffirms the city's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime during Crime Victims' Rights Week and throughout the year, and to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to approving, improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. Signed this second day of April 2019, Mayor Melissa Holland, City of Palm Coast.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Ficciello, and I'm with Victim Services at the Flagler Beach Police Department. And on behalf of the Flagler County Advocate Alliance, I'd like to thank the city of Palm Coast for your continued support of victims' rights. And I'd also like to invite everyone to the Flagler Beach Pier on Sunday, April 14, for our sunrise ceremony in honor of National Crime Victims' Rights Week, and it is at 7:00 a.m. sunrise, but everybody's invited, and the state attorney, R.J. Larissa, will be there. Sheriff Rick Staley will be speaking, as well as Chief Matt Downey, and a bunch of others. So everybody's welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number F4 is a proclamation of Gopher Tortoise Day. Is that yourself or Jack? Councilmember Howell will be presenting. I would ask our team receiving to please approach the podium.
Okay. Whereas the gopher tortoise has been living on the planet for 500,000 to 2 million years, and whereas the gopher tortoise today is, in the state of Florida, listed as a threatened. And Florida is considered the stronghold for the gopher tortoise, the stronghold for gopher tortoise conservation among southeastern states. And whereas the gopher tortoise is considered a keystone species, which means that if it were to be removed, the ecosystem that relies on its presence would drastically suffer. And whereas the gopher tortoise's burrow protects more than 350 other commensal species, some of which are also listed as threatened. And whereas the gopher tortoise's habit needs protection, and having gopher tortoises and other species in the city of Palm Coast helps sustain our area's ecology and provide people with a source of joy and appreciation for nature. Now therefore, we have proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, April 10, 2019, to be celebrated as Gopher Tortoise Day in the city of Palm Coast, and urged all citizens to protect their species through education and awareness. Signed this second day of April, Melissa Holland, Mayor. And I know that you guys are very interested in that. You'll keep an eye on what the critters are up to. Okay?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Jordan Myers, and I serve as the Environmental Planning Technician in the Community Development Department. I want to thank City Council for recognizing April 10 as Gopher Tortoise Day. Our beautiful city supports a wealth of different habitats and animals, including the gopher tortoise, which helps shelter and provide habitat to hundreds of other species. We are very fortunate that so many of our citizens look out for these wonderful creatures, and we urge you, if you see a gopher tortoise or their burrow, to call the city and notify us so we can continue protecting this species. Thank you.
We'll now move to agenda item number five, which is, do you know? A proclamation designating May 4, 2019, as Arbor Day. Councilmember Franquino will be presenting. I would ask our team to come up to receive.
Palm Coast Proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And as where, whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. And thus, whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable, resource-giving as paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, whenever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the city council in the city of Palm Coast does hereby proclaim Saturday, May 4, 2019, as Arbor Day. Be it further proclaimed that the city council urges all of its citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to plant trees, which will promote the well-being of this and future generations. April 16, excuse me, this day, 16th day of April, 2019, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, council members and Mayor Holland. I'm very honored to be here. For the 14th year in a row, I'm accepting the Arbor Day proclamation. I guess I'm probably dating myself when I do that, but I'm so thrilled for your support and the citizens' support, and I hope that I'll see all of you come out to Arbor Day. It's going to be a lot of fun. We're giving away trees as usual, and we'll have that butterfly release that everyone loves so much. Also, our wonderful butterfly tent, which will be bigger than ever this year. So please, I hope everyone comes out, and thank you for your support. Thank you. Agenda item number F6 is a presentation of the Certificate of Completion to Councilmember Franquino for the Florida League of Cities Institute for Elected Municipal Officials. Franquino for the Florida League of Cities Institute for Elected Municipal Officials.
So on behalf of the John Scott Daley Florida Institute of Government and the Florida League of Cities, I am proud to present this certificate to you for completion of 18 hours of instruction for the Institute for Elected Municipal Officials in Jacksonville at the end of January. It is the sincere hope that the program was challenging and worthwhile for you from the Florida League of Cities and the institute, and they look forward to your attendance in future institutes of learning, and that this shows that you are committed to your improvement of your local government as well as government in Florida. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. This was very informative, this course I took, and I'll tell you a little, little, little story, especially with Sunshine Law. The day after I finished, I went to a store, and I saw the mayor there. I was pulling a card, and I say, "Hi, Mayor." Bye, Mayor. She looked at me like, "What's wrong with this guy?" But that was it. That's how I, how much I respect the Sunshine Law. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. That is a true story. It was very interesting. He reran. Agenda item number G7 is an ordinance, Mr. Reichman.
Mayor, council, this is an ordinance of the city council, city of Palm Coast. Amending Chapter 2, Administration, Article 11, numeral 6, Retirement Division 2, Volunteer Firefighter Retirement System and Trust Fund. Amending Section 5, excuse me, Section 2, 540, Maximum Pension. Amending Section 2, 549, Supplemental Benefit, Providing for Severability Codification, Providing for Conflicts, and Providing an Effective Date. This is the first reading, Mayor.
Mayor, council, this is amending our volunteer firefighter retirement fund. That fund is funded purely from insurance premiums from the state of Florida that helps the volunteer firefighters. This amendment simply changes the code to match the IRS regulations for the maximum yearly benefit. And so it's really a ministerial change to reflect the change in IRS regulations and to make sure that our ordinance stays up to date with those changes. Staff has no other comments or presentation, but ready for any questions you may have.
Council, any questions or discussion on this agenda item? Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number G7? Please do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Take it back to this council, undertake a motion.
With approval.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number H8 is a resolution approving a contract amendment with BBI for Phase 2 improvements to Holland Park and Ralph Carter Park and work orders with SME and JPA for construction phase services.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This item has been a long time coming. This includes actually two projects, both Holland Park, the second phase, and then Ralph Carter Park dedicated pickleball courts. This, Holland Park started back in, I think, 2004 with the first master plan. Recession hit, the project came back to life and was phased. We completed Phase 1, which has been a big hit. And then, of course, Phase 2, as funding became available through our sales tax, be local by local, all sales tax dollars would go towards these projects, made possible Phase 2. When the initial bidding came from the construction manager, we obviously had to make tough choices about what to cut and what to keep in, and did some value engineering, an update from your workshop. The total scope changes in value engineering is up to 1.6 million, including, isn't that, includes all the amenities that really the community has been talking about for years, including the splash park, the playground for toddlers and smaller kids, sports lighting for horseshoe volleyball, shuffleboard, the bocce ball court covering, which those folks have been to city council before, along with some renovations to some restrooms, picnic pavilions, the small dog park covering. The following items were deleted from the scope of services in order to bring that cost down. And that includes the two dedicated pickleball courts, but I'm going to come back to pickleball courts, racquetball courts, and exercise fitness station area, along with some other value engineering. Now, council, because of really the strong support for pickleball in this community, really stressed that we wanted to probably build as many pickleball courts as we could. And so taking that direction, you added the Ralph Carter Park dedicated pickleball courts. And Carl had conversations with the leadership of that group that really said the minimum number to have would be six. And so we were able to include six dedicated pickleball courts rather than the two at Holland Park. And so the proposal you have before you tonight includes all those renovations, along with the six dedicated pickleball courts at Ralph Carter. And so Carl will go over the details. We discussed this at length at workshop, but of course, he's ready to answer any more questions that you have, and go through a quick presentation on where we are today to kick off Phase 2 of Holland Park and the pickleball courts at Ralph Carter Park. Carl, take it from here.
Yes. Good evening. Just to go through a summary, an update from our workshop meeting, we'll start with Holland Park. We originally had low over $3.5 million in our CIP for the construction phase of the project. In our initial project proposal to complete out the Phase 2 improvements, ultimate was close to $7 million. So, you know, as our city manager indicated, we went back to the drawing board, met with our construction management firm, our design team, and looked at ways we could value engineer components of the project and what items we could remove to reduce the cost. So we were able to get the cost down by close to $1.5 million, which then brought in a project total under $5.5 million. And we were able to, through our 10-year CIP, when we were revisiting all the projects and prioritizing, we were able to plug in that dollar figure to cover the cost of this particular project of those modified improvements. And Ralph Carter Park originally had in our budget $200,000 for a couple of pickleball courts. Our initial proposal came in at $600,000, and that was due to the modified design where we tried to expand the courts to fit as many that would, the space would allow. So we also visited this project as well and spoke with, welched tenant, our contractor, our subcontractor through the construction management firm, and they proposed the savings of close to $100,000 to modify the construction of the court to be more consistent with what, how they build these pickleball courts throughout Florida. So that would, brought the cost down to just over $500,000, and as well, we were able to modify that in our 10-year CIP to fund that project. So what we really have here tonight, we have three items up for approval. One is with the engineering firm, SME. They're the firm that provided the design for the playground, the kids' zone, the splash zone area, some construction phase services for Holland Park, and they did the design for the pickleball courts as well. So there's some services needed from them during the construction phase. And as well as an architectural firm, Joseph Fazuli Architect, there are some structures involved with both projects. So there'll be some construction phase services needed as well. And then we have an existing contract with our construction management firm, BBI Construction, and this is to establish the guaranteed maximum price of just over $5.6 million to complete both projects.
And then Carl, could, sorry, on that last slide, could you highlight the difference between the construction delivery process of this phase? What does at-risk mean versus the first phase?
Construction management at-risk, we've built a couple of projects like this in the city. One of them is City Hall that we're in now, the other one is Community Center Project. And this is a more of a team approach where you have a construction management firm, your design team in the city, that is a three-way partnership, and you work together through the design phase to analyze and visit the design, provide the most cost-effective approach. The construction management firm, once they, we have a good level of design, they obtain pricing from various subcontractors. They go through a normal bidding process and obtain quotes from various subcontractors. And we have a fixed price that we pay them that is negotiated upfront, that's already in their contract, that they'll make a certain percentage of, off of the project. So it's a fixed fee for profit. And they, the guaranteed maximum price means is they're going to construct this project for that cost, and if it goes over, they're responsible for that overage. If there's savings to this, that savings is shared between them and the city. We get the majority of those savings back to us. But most of these numbers in this cost are hard numbers that they have from their subcontractors at this point in time.
Thank you.
Council, any questions on this item?
Yes. Let me start by saying that I have absolutely nothing, nothing against bocce. The other way around, because I met a few of those guys who explained to me in Italian, which I couldn't understand a word, the rules of the game. What I find is that $485,000 being spent to fix that and create what the people there wants, which is a shade, they want something that could cover them from the sun. I went by, I measured it, I spoke to people, did my homework, and I still have no idea why we're going to spend $485,000. Apparently, the oyster shell crushed, which is the part. If you renew everything, if you buy a ton, it costs you $385 per ton, and we don't need a ton there. Also, the oyster flour, and I'm talking about the best that is, the best products you could use in that. It's a dollar a pound. Each square foot takes half conservatively, excuse me, a quarter to conservatively, half pound. If you use the 4x4s recommended, you're talking about 80 feet per quart. Actually, it's less because one, the centerpiece is good enough for both of them. You're talking about a dollar 60, dollar 60 per square, per foot, linear foot, for severe And this comes down to $256, $256. Then I called a few people because I wanted to know what it was about, what would be so And the materials, the materials you could get conservatively, very conservatively, for $2,000, just the materials for all of that. If you do the canopy, that, I don't know the price, but we're talking about $485,000? If you're going to straight some of the benches there, because the benches are good, all mine are good, all mine benches there, they're good. All they have to do is be straightened up. $485,000. That's where I draw the line in between bocce, which I happen to love. I love when those old men start cursing at each other. I love it. Okay? I had a lot of fun there, and I asked questions. All they want, it's the canopy and top, all they want is the shade. So personally, I don't see the need at this point for the city to spend $485,000 for this. Then, when it comes to pickleball, he wants me to start playing pickleball.
Love the pickleball.
I went to see a bunch of people play pickleball. They were playing at Holland Park. Beautiful. I loved it. Then again, I went to do my homework again. The USAPA and the American Sports Builder Association, the most expensive ones they had, and I'm talking about, if you go with a max which is 4x70, 40x70, which is for tournaments, and 30x60, which that's what we have, it's for recreational. The most expensive ones from scratch went from $25,000 to $35,000. The most expensive ones. And I called them, and I was, "You sure?" Because I'm going to say that. You could say it, sir. Unless you're, you know, labor there, it's astronomical, those are the numbers. And I have absolute, actually, I like pickleball. But $100,000 for each one of those courts, I just find it a little too much, with all due respect.
Well, you know, I'd like to address both of those. The $485,000 for the bocce was the original price, and that was one of the specific items that we were able to value engineer, and we brought that down considerably. It also included added lighting to the court system as well. So that, that wasn't the cost anymore. That was the initial cost, that $485 that you referenced. And in terms of the pickleball, that was one where we got, brought it down close to $100,000, and that included the fencing around the perimeter, the sports lighting to light the courts as well. So it's more than just the pickleball courts itself, the walkways to get to the courts and the parking lot. So there's more in the drainage issue, the grading work that needs to be done, some of the site work. So there's, there's more than just an actual pickleball court itself with that project.
I forgot to tell you, fencing and lighting, that's when it comes to $35,000, when you do fencing and lighting. Because without that, it's a lot cheaper. I just find it a lot of money, with all due respect. And if we can't find money for public works, and I insist on this, for public work, especially for the safety part of it, if we can't find the money, I love these people, they were phenomenal, but spending in between $600,000, and you said considerably down, maybe $400,000? If we're going to spend that, almost a million dollars, I want to make sure that's not just going to have to be for amenities, with all due respect. And I fell in love with pickleball, but I still think it's a lot of money, and I don't think we should go for it.
Any other questions on this item? Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I have a major issue with the splash park. And I say that because in one of my skill sets, I was the supervisor of Ocean Rescue for the city of Jacksonville for 18 years. And at one point in the early 2000 timeframe, they introduced this thing called a splash park at Hannah Park, which is one of the two city parks. It was a nightmare. It was the worst thing that I could ever have, and I'm an ocean rescue guard. What happened was, I had to provide lifeguards there, not for drowning, but for first aid from scrapes and falls. I've had broken arms, parents don't watch their kids. The other problem we had is the kids were tracking dirt, which in turn tracked in mud. The filtration system was a nightmare to deal with. I had to come in before I could leave, after I secured my ocean guys, and go back and clean out the filters. There were six or seven of them, you know, the standard pool filters. Then on top of that, the little ones were mixed up. You had to be under four feet tall to get into their splash park. And the little ones are going to have accidents, and they're going to leave something on the cement, which meant that we had to shut the pool down, and we had, or the splash park down, we had to clean it and wait about three hours. I think that was the time that the health department told us before we could reopen it. So while the concept is neat, and they are fun to look at, you're not responsible for running the show, watching the kids, and at least at Hannah Park, the people that would come in had to pay a fee. This is free. And I don't see any return on investment, you know? I'm sorry, I'm very parochial on this. You got a free ocean out there. This is not like up in New Jersey where you pay your child's life to get on the beach for the day. We have swimming pools in the area, and a lot of people have pools in the house. So I just think that portion of the construction for Holland Park, and I love Holland Park, but I don't think this is needed. I'm sorry. I mean, and I lived that nightmare. You guys, if it's approved, you're not going to be out there living that nightmare.
I will be.
Well, you're not going to be living, well, you're too tall, you can't get in there.
Talking about, talking about.
You're going to have to shrink.
Yeah. Good at the limbo, but I will take the little ones out there.
Yeah. And so that's, that's my only concern about this. And if I'm the Grinch, I'm the Grinch. You know, I'm thinking to myself, I remember running in a sprinkler system. That was a big deal. Okay? So that's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
May I piggyback on councilmember Howell's comment? So some of the things that you brought up are definitely things we need to be aware of. That was actually the number one complaint in an overall nationwide study about problems with splash pads, splash pads, was basically the abrasiveness that is installed for people to have traction is actually what causes a lot of those scrapes and falls. And when a lot of these things were designed previously, they would have the rough concrete, and that creates an issue because you have obviously slippery surfaces. and that creates an issue because you have obviously slippery surfaces and a lot of friction when these kids fall. So that's something that I'm sure is going to be engineered to be more along the lines of something like tanger outlets. Have you been to tanger outlets recently? No, the big splash pad with all the kids there?
No.
Nope. Kids, kids do enjoy splash pads, and you can't take a toddler to the ocean, and that's really where we're lacking a bunch of options for younger parents in Palm Coast. We don't have a lot of, really just amenities for the zero to four-year-olds, and that is a really delicate age. You can't take a four-year-old to the ocean and let them just go in the ocean. I, I hear what you're saying, Councilman Howell, but there's also a different perspective from the younger generation where you need those areas that aren't as dangerous, and ocean can take away a little one very quickly.
Well, you're right about that, but that's called parenting. And I had. What I, what I say is, you know, when there is an accident in the ocean and there's a drowning, and I'm going to tell you this.
There were a hundred rescues this weekend.
Yeah, well, I'm going to tell you, in the 18 years I ran that park, I did not have one person drown on my watch.
Okay.
And when I ran the program here in Flagler, I did not have one kid drown on my watch. The problem here is where you have near drowning situations, or you have lost children, is because parents aren't watching their kids. And I can't tell you the number of missing kids, and parents are going frantic, "Where's my kid?" Well, hey, guess what? Why didn't you watch your kid? So I'm telling you, I hear your argument, because you are a younger generation, and I approve, you know, I, I understand where you go with this, but this doesn't make sense. And I'm sorry, that's my position, and that's not going to change. I lived it, you didn't.
But I am living it, and three-year-olds are still fast. Were they not that fast back then?
Well, hey, well, take them down to the ocean and watch them. It's free.
Any other questions or comments on this issue? I'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number H8? Please do so at this time. You have up to three minutes. Please state your name for the record, and your three minutes will begin.
I know you're three-year-old. Palm Coast, a few things. First of all, let's get rid of this term "value engineering," "value added." Carl, I'm sorry about this, this is nothing personal, but this is stupid wording. I worked for an $8 billion engineering and construction firm. We never use this term. This is what your job is when you work for an engineering firm. You do this type of work. It's not added. I've got a real issue with that. Now, we've got two small projects, again, these are small projects, using this construction manager at risk process. I complained about it months ago when it came to the, with another project. I still think this is ridiculous. It's throwing away money. If a project manager for the city can't manage the, the billing, reviewing the, the bills that come in, the invoices, and then approve them or disallow them, and that person shouldn't be doing project management work at all. These are very basic things. The costs are coming in high because you've got this fee that's going on. Of course, construction managers at risk proponents are not going to run over budget because they've already got that padding built into the budget. What you need to do on these small things is you go with the design-build process for a fixed fee. If the people who then can't build it for that amount of money, provided that there is nothing major that had to happen as far as a catastrophic-type engineering event or, or something I should say on the site, then that's their problem. They bid the project. If you want to give them an incentive to do it even faster, and then, then it can come in less money, then you split with a 50-50 revenue, any excess available funds go to the city, and 50% go to the construction company. Thank you.
Your comments. Next speaker.
My name is Angela Storno, and I live in the East section of Palm Coast. I was here to speak to you about the pickleball courts, placing pickleball courts at the end of the, southern end of the city. You currently have them at Holland and in the hammock, but there's nothing down this end. We currently have three tennis courts located at Fredis Ambo Pool, and only two of them of the courts are drawn for pickleball lines. Court time is, is on a first come, first served basis with tennis players. Yes, there's three open court times for pickleball, and two of the times are listed are mid to late in the afternoon. Unfortunately, this is when it's very hot outside. The temporary nets that are issued from the city for play are ripped and duct taped together. I mean, it's horrible. A lot of us went out and bought our own nets just to use them, but did you ever try bringing your own net, and you got 20, 30 people to play, and then it's time for you to leave, and you need to pull your net, and you're telling 20, 30 people, "I'm sorry, I got to go home now"? I mean, this is how many people we have playing pickleball. It is a very popular sport. Office hours aren't convenient to obtain the temporary nets for play. Also, the safety issues when using temporary courts. We have witnessed people getting hung up during play in the dividing area where the tennis court, tennis nets are located, so they fall backwards, they catch their foot in the tennis nets, and they fall over. One person hit their head, the other person cracked a rib. We do not have tennis courts located without the city. Why not pickleball courts? We have tennis courts, but why not pickleball courts? I'm not against the splash pad for kids, but you have a lot of senior and young adults alike in Palm Coast that can utilize the courts much more when considering the cost of water, maintenance, and safety. Also, if you like to consider how often the splash pad would be used. Are they going to use it when school is open? Are they going to use it at night? In the winter? During all these times, the pickleball courts could be utilized. Many of us play five to six days a week, and probably more if we could have a place to play. This is an extremely popular and healthy and social sport for all ages. These courts can benefit everyone if they're placed on both ends of the city. This can also bring in further revenue for the city if tournaments were held, for the hotels, the restaurants, the fees for pickleball. Remember, there is very little maintenance involved except resurfacing the courts, unlike our golf courses, our pool, our parks, and community center. The kids could swim in the pool, they can learn how to do that, and we had that when we were kids. You have, you have classes to swim. You don't need to spend that much money on a splash court. Thank you for considering this issue.
Your comments. Next speaker. Our rules and procedures dictate that we will act with civility, and we will not be clapping after each comment. Please respect that process, please.
Mayor, hi. My name is Dr. George Carlon. I'm from Palm Coast. I just had a couple of questions listening to your presentations here. I realize that value engineering is a term I don't use as a scientist, but it's been thrown around here a lot. But what I didn't hear from anybody was whether or not, I'll use what you were saying, bocce ball, how many people play bocce ball? How many people for that money? How many people play horseshoes for that money? Pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in the U.S. It seems to me for the, for the dollar that you put, excuse me, for the dollars that you're putting in, pickleball is worth it. But I guess you don't have any data on how many people are going to use the bocce ball court, the horseshoe court. Seems like that's very important to know before you start taking, or start approving $600,000 for a particular project. Data is important. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Bless you.
Good evening. My name's Donna Dolbear, and I'm resident in the P section. Pickleball is a new sport to me. Many of the citizens here in Palm Coast reside here because you advocate a very healthy lifestyle here. You have bikes, bike paths, walking paths, nice parks. A lot of people consider pickleball as an old-person sport. It's multi-generational. Orange County here in Orlando, every middle school is teaching it in the physical education department. My grandsons, who have, who go to school up in Wilmington, North Carolina, they're teaching pickleball. They're adding to the numbers. This is a multi-generational sport. Families can play together. When people come here to visit, they can play together. We need dedicated courts. We have none in the city. We have in the county, a few. The temporary courts, I believe Angie mentioned, can be dangerous. Parks and Rec have full classes for new beginners. We see these people being added all the time. There are currently two tournaments that are being sponsored, the Senior Games and the Hammock Cup. Last year, there were eight cups, oh, sorry, eight courts that were needed to conduct those two tournaments. This year, there are 10 courts needed. There are over 250 people who are being in the Hammock Cup this year, this month, in 10 days. These people can add revenue to our community. I believe you would be short-sighted in not adding pickleball courts in a convenient location where there are restaurants, hotels. There will be revenue coming into the town if we can expand this. It has happened in other towns, it will happen here. Splash pads, they won't add to our economy, but pickleball can. With splash pads, we have seasonal use. With pickleball courts, virtually all year round, they'll be used by everyone, multi-generational. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. We talk a lot about water conservation, and we hear it on the news all the time, and I just haven't heard anything said about, you know, what is water usage with a splash pad? I mean, you have runoff, and you have evaporation, so how much water usage is a splash pad? Just curious. Thank you.
Your comments. Next speaker.
Silly Pugilistic Palm Coast. I also have my very serious questions about the burden to us, the taxpayers, with this splash park, and the liabilities that we will incur with this splash park. I want this council to be aware that the citizens really question spending additional five, over $5 million on, on the parks, on additional amenities, when we have our public workpeople improperly sheltered from the weather to repair vehicles, and we, when we have so many other issues that we need, they are priorities that we need to tackle. I'm concerned about children getting hurt and lawsuits that could happen on these splash parks and the water consumption, and if we're going to have to create a full department for the, for, or have a, to pay a person like a lifeguard type to avoid injuries and everything else. I don't think the city is ready for that. We cannot afford that on the taxpayers' pockets, that's what I think. Let's think with common sense and put the horse in front of the carriage, other than in the back. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Dennis McDonald. Mayor, could I suggest maybe that we get some of this value engineering focused on the demographics of the population that live in this community? It seems to me that there are a whole lot more people that want to play pickleball than they do want to go to a splash park, and we can't be a society that provides everything to everybody. So, but to Mr. Clufus's point, I would expect that at some point in the future, I hope that there's going to be a YMCA that shows up and puts a branch here in Palm Coast, and I would hope that maybe you offer him the ability to be their representative, so maybe they could get a splash park going. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker. Okay, I'll close public comment, take it back to this council if there's any other questions.
I just want to add something. For the people that play pickleball, which most likely I'm going to be joining you soon because I really liked it, just on my little study, there are at this point, at this point, 2.4 million people playing in all the United States, and more than half of that, it's in California. That's where they have more of those pickleball fields, if I may call them, more than anything else. I love to be able to tell you, yes, we're going to get six courts, but at $100,000 apiece, that's where I see the problem. I have nothing against pickleball the other way around. I'm telling you, I'm going to be an avid player. Okay? And that's, I want to make sure that I leave that clear. And as for the bocce, I'm not going to play that because they don't let me. I'm too rough for that. But the thing is that I just want you to understand, it's because of the price that we pay. That's the only reason, okay, that I encounter a problem.
And if I can add on top of that, I think if we're being honest with ourselves, the pickleball usage and splash pad usage are almost inversely related to one another. If we're honest, Malcomper clears out when it's 100 degrees in the afternoon on a Sunday. Everybody knows that. If I gave you a splash, well, maybe not 1:00, by 4:00 is toastada. So if, at that point, it's 110 degrees out there and there's no coverage, that pickleball court isn't really a usable thing, right?
Okay, we're not going to talk back and forth. That's not how we do this.
Yep. My only point to this council is that the usage is inversely proportional. If it's 100 degrees outside, I've been at these pickleball courts before, and we clear out. It's, it's, it's a moot point.
Again, we do not make comments out in the audience, please. Thank you.
I just did.
Okay. There's nothing else? Anyone want to make a motion on this issue?
Well, I will move, I will make a motion for item number eight, which is a resolution approving contract amendment with PBI for phase two improvements to Holland Park and Ralph Carter Park and work orders with SNME and JPA for construction phase services.
Sir, a second.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
No.
Passes three to two. Agenda item number H9 is a resolution approving the Second Amendment to increase funds for a federally funded sub-grant agreement with Florida Department of Emergency Management relating to Hurricane Irma expenses.
Mayor, council, this item was not on your workshop agenda. We got it over the weekend. This is good news, though. The state of Florida Division of Emergency Management has authorized an additional $500,000 approximately for Hurricane Irma expenses, and so this agreement simply amends your previous agreement to include that additional amount. So we continue to receive reimbursements for our hurricane expenses. This is good news.
How much does that have us remaining?
I believe, Elena, you may have to come up. Couldn't hear. I could probably pull up Elena's spreadsheet. Give me one second, mayor.
Okay. Okay.
How much is remaining on Hurricane Irma after this, the state obligation? How much is left to be obligated by the state?
How much is left to be obligated? We still have $2 million to go. So this will put us at 1.1 million obligated, the million that we received, and then the balance is about $2 million.
Two out of the four, and then Hurricane Matthew. I believe we're almost fully obligated in the coming days.
We are almost fully obligated. We're, I believe, $200,000 away from being fully obligated on Hurricane Matthew.
The total for that was around $3 million, I believe.
Well, this is good news.
Yeah, this is really good news.
Definitely good news. We're making progress.
I think your conversations must be heard in Tallahassee because.
Slowly but surely.
It's starting to move a lot. Your last, I believe your last business meeting, you amended it, and then now this business meeting amended it again, which means more money is continuing to flow back to the city.
Two amendments in two weeks is pretty good.
Well, let's keep the pressure on with our representatives, for sure.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number H9? Please do so at this time. See no one, I'll close public comment, take it back to this council, entertain a motion. Take it back to this council, entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. We'll now move to the consent agenda. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda items either 10, 11, 12, or 13, please do so at this time. We can do these one at a time?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thanks. 10. The reason I wanted to speak on this, I just wanted to commend the city on how they handled this one, okay? That meeting that I told you that I went to, that was in early December, okay? I went to a neighborhood meeting about a development where we own a piece of property, happened to just sit back and listen to what was going on. And this is the one down on Pritchard, okay? And there was obviously, there's a huge problem down there. And so what was happening is, is that the residents were tying to, they were mad as hell at Tyner. And so, and they were also mad at the developer who was creating a new development down there. And he became aware of the fact that there was certainly a big sewer problem down there. That, you know, one guy was saying that he, when he can drive, when there's a lot of water and he can drive his truck through and end up with toilet paper on his running boards, there was certainly a problem down there on Pritchard. So, to, so to everyone's credit, the city got involved, apparently, you know, with the developer and came up with a solution. But I called Eddie and made him aware of the fact that this was going on. I thought this was his area down there. I wasn't quite sure, okay? And he promised me that he would jump in on it and get something done. And apparently, something has done, so something very positive has come out of this. And so we're no longer gonna have sewage in the streets anymore down there when there's get heavy rains, and everybody seems to be happy. So in four months, you've had a real positive outcome, which is commendable. So I commend you on that, and that's what I wanted to say on that one, so.
Thank you. Did you want to move to agenda item number 11?
This is the, no, I wanted to talk about number 12.
Okay.
Okay? And so, as far as the, the traffic engineering and the money we're paying for the traffic engineering, is there some way, mayor, that, that with all this fiber network that I hear about all the time, and how little usage the fiber network has here in this city, is there some way that we could use the fiber network to make the two east-west corridors, okay, in this city, Palm Coast Parkway and Route 100, on a controlled basis with a computer, so that if you drove the speed limit, you could literally drive from east to west and have a very nice ride and not have to stop at every single light? It just seems to me that we're living in an age that this is not impossible, and so we're paying a lot of money for traffic studies. And so I would appreciate it if there'd be a way that we could get this done, because everybody I talk to talks about this. And I have to tell you, it's just, it's not about, Palm Coast's Parkway's bad, but 100, it just seems you can't not hit pretty much every single light on 100. So there's no reason why in this time, and with the fiber network and such that we're, that we have, that we can't go ahead and address this and get it done, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to make public comment on any of the consent agenda items?
John Brady, Palm Coast. Item number 12. I don't understand why we need to pay a consultant to come in and tell us there are too many cars on the road. That's the problem, folks. We have two east-west corridors, and everybody goes from the west to the east. And as I said in my letter to the editor, we need to be thinking about developing the west side of Route 1. And along those lines, I'll go back to the question that I asked at the beginning, which has not been answered. What is the status of white view?
It's not the agenda item, but thank you.
It was in the, never mind.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to make public comment on any of these consent agenda items, please do so at this time.
As a taxpayer, I am concerned. My name is Celia Boglisi again, and I'm concerned about these expenditures we have on the fiber connection. I guess it's a fiber optic connection. Is this fiber optic? Are we talking fiber optic?
No.
No? Oh, okay.
Thank you.
I misunderstood.
Any other member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda items number 10, 11, 12, or 13?
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. Item number 12 was about the traffic engineering consultant services. Very rarely do they take into quality of life when they do their traffic studies. Is there some way to work quality of life for residents into the traffic studies? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member? Okay. If not, I will take, Beau, if you can just speak about the traffic engineering that Mr. McDonald had brought up in regards to the flow of traffic and using our fiber and compares to the computers.
Sure. Traffic optimization is in, currently in Phase Three. So the first few phases were really about connecting our signals to the optimization system, so that traffic engineers, rather than going out and watching cars pass by and changing the timings, they could do it remotely. Future phases do include some of those adaptive traffic control measures that would allow, you know, us to be more responsive. You know, different than a downtown city with a grid system, there's some different issues in Palm Coast's general layout. But I will say, as we proceed forward with those additional phases, as we implement them, they will add some of those things Mr. McDonald talked about in the future.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for the other commenters on the agenda items. Can we please look for and entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
I'll make it.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. We'll now move to agenda item number J. This is a time for speakers to come up and speak on items not on the agenda that have not selected to speak at the beginning of the meeting. Now is your time to speak.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. You know, I like to hear you members, individual members, or all of you members of the city council, just watch our money carefully. And, and just like the bocce courts and construction and that, the overhead and all of that, how much it costs, and whether you could get it better or whatever, but keep the cost down. Where, if you, if you can save in one area, you can do something in another area, like pickleball, or something like that. But I urge you, no matter what, watch the pennies, watch the money, and, and make sure that, that independent, our people who are working for us, watch our money, not spend our money, or, or rather, take it in. If they can get it for a lower cost, at the same value, the same structures and everything, go that, go that route and everything. You, you have to do that and, and everything. It's very important. I do it in my own home, at home. At least I try anyway, when I can. Thank you.
Your comments. Next speaker.
Georgia Mail, Palm Coast. Good evening. Question, when is the official start date for the new city manager? And I would congratulate Beau for the fantastic he's done in the interim. And since Nestor has retired, has a new head of public works been appointed, or hired, or whatever, and how are we doing in the interim? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Do you speak at the beginning?
Dennis McDonald. This is the reason I came tonight, mayor. I came to, to talk to you about an article that was in the paper about the Metansus Woods Parkway, one of my favorite subjects. And as you probably know, there were very few things that former mayor Nets and I ever agreed on, okay? But the one thing we did agree on was the fact is that the Metansus Woods interchange is a nightmare, okay? And when the county had it, I did my very best to try and get a bunch of things changed on it. I was successful on, and just on a very couple minor points. But what was discussed in the article here, and what Mr. Howell asked about, and what you're talking about with Mr. Renner, you're talking about sightlines. And what they did is, is they, the FDOT came out and they essentially did what's known as a stoplight warrant, or some kind of reduced phase of a stoplight warrant. That's what they call it, okay? The bottom line here is, is there are a number, that one exit, if you come from the north and you get off at Metansus, there is no sightline. And so consequently, if you have a situation where at 30 miles an hour, and I believe the speed limit, if I'm not mistaken, out there is 50, you need 425 feet to stop, okay? Having done this and had to pay for way too many DOT expansions, you know, I'm well aware of it. So at 42 inches is where your eye is, that's where they measure it. You need 300 feet at 30, you need 360 at 40, and you need 425 at 50. There's no way that that's out there. And so consequently, what they told you, mayor, was, was not the answer to the question. Yet, the question is, or the resolution needs to be made, is, is there a proper sightline? Do they have the proper sightline, you know, on that particular exit ramp? And I don't believe that they do. And I've complained to it, to the county, and quite honestly, I asked members, not many of the members that are here now, but many of the members, okay, not to accept that interchange from Faith Akati, the way she did it, it's because I asked for it and the residents asked for it. What you did is you penetrated the pedestrian right-of-way that the kids had to use to go to school. So as soon as you put that bridge in, kids had, were made that they had to walk to school. And so consequently, what they did is, is that the county came along and they put entrance ramps in that are 150 feet wide. And so that was unacceptable. What should have been done is, there should have been an entrance and an exit put on, on one side or the other, so the kids could have maintained their right-of-way that they had been given five years before, so. But go back and ask them on the sightline, and have the sightline reviewed. It's not there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
John Brady, Palm Coast. Since it wasn't time when we were dealing with it, can you answer the question that I asked at the beginning? What is the status of the white view diminishing of the road?
Thank you. Next speaker. Okay, we'll close public comment. Thank you for your comments, Louis, and George. Our new city manager, his official start date is Monday, the 8th. He will be coming in the end of this week. And as far as the Public Works Director, our fire chief has been named the interim, and Mr. Morton, our new city manager, will be making a termination once he gets in for a permanent position, on how that's gonna be filled. So we do have a transition plan that we're working through. I will definitely pose the question to FDOT about the sun, sightline, Mr. McDonald. I appreciate your comments, and I agree that this is a very serious issue in our part of the community. And as far as white view, we're moving forward. Okay? So we will go to agenda item number K, which is discussion by city council of matters, not on the agenda. Councilmember Cuth.
Yes, I have one item. Madam Mayor, it's actually a question that came up regarding our city, new city manager's contract. And the issue is the interpretation of the moving expenses clause. If you recall, and Mr. Reichman, I'm sure, can cite us to the specific provision, but Mr. Morton asked for, and we agree, that we would pay the actual cost of certain moving expenses based on the lowest responsive bid we could get. And as far as I know, we've received at least two, and I believe maybe three. That's not the issue. The issue is, I think there was an understanding, or at least an expectation, that that's an actual number that we will pay on his behalf. But due to some recent changes in the tax laws, as I have been informed, all of that amount, which is, I believe, just a little under $18,000, will be taxable income to Mr. Morton next year, which means essentially, we're reimbursing him, if, if we consider that a gross number, we're reimbursing him for about two-thirds of the cost of moving here from Washington State. So I wanted to bring that to the council's attention, if anybody wants to discuss what their understanding of that was. I think we need to do it, but I think we also need clarification for staff and for Wendy Cullen and HR, as to whether we're going to pay the actual cost of his moving expenses and cover whatever the tax, yeah.
My understanding was, we were, we were paying.
Well, that would include then the, the tax impact, in that case, since it is apparently dollar-for-dollar taxable income. So I don't know.
My understanding.
If you feel like a motion is appropriate, I don't think we need to amend the contract, but when the time comes for the reimbursement, we just want to be clear what it is we're, we're actually paying.
Motion, go ahead.
Yeah, I would move that we inform Mr. Morton that the moving expenses will be reimbursed in the amount of the lowest bid, and that that reimbursement will also cover any tax liability for that, that money, since it is a one-time expense, and he is, he is moving here roughly from the far side of the moon.
There's a second?
Second, yeah, second.
Moved in seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Is that your only item, Mr. Cuth?
That, that is my only item for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ben Quino, do you have anything?
Nothing else. I think I already said too much today.
Vice Mayor Clufus.
Yep, I have one item, Madam Mayor, and I believe I answered my own question, but just to confer with Beau, the amendments that we requested as a council in our previous business workshop, those are gonna come back up again on the 16th. I thought perhaps we might see them earlier than that, but looking over the agenda that Helena has provided via the 2020 budget calendar, puts it at the 16th. So if I could just confirm that, that's my only item.
My understanding is that this council wanted to see options, and with the new city manager coming in, I know you want to move forward as quick as possible, obviously. The agenda for the 9th is set up as a workshop, you know, my guess, the 30th, you know, but that's something this council can give direction to the new city manager about, if you want to see that on April 16th. But if you want to discuss it at a workshop again, my, my recommendation would be at the 30th, because literally, April 9th will be the second day for Mr. Morton, so.
Understood. Thank you. It does.
Okay. Councilmember Howell, do you have anything at this time?
Yeah, I will be out of town next week. I've been accepted to Harvard University's Kennedy School of Government, their senior executive leadership program, and I wanted the people to know that it's coming out of my pocket, not the city's pocket, and I also reimbursed the city of Palm Coast for one week's pay.
Okay. And I have nothing at this time. Discussion by city attorney of matters, not on the agenda.
Nothing, mayor.
Question by city manager of matters, not on the agenda.
Nothing, mayor.
Okay.
All right, yes, I will motion to adjourn our meeting.
Thank you.
All right. Not in a hurry.